We will now call to order the city council meeting for August 15th, 2023. Roll call, please.
Garza?
He's here.
Conklin?
Here.
Goss?
President.
Fast?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Pastor Peterson, join us for prayer, please, or lead us, please.
I'll be glad to let you direct.
I'll listen and I'll join in.
We've got good listeners today. Dear heavenly Father, we just thank you for the grace and the mercy and the honor, Father God, the privilege that we come before the city council. We thank you, Lord God, for the blessings that they are, the organization that they run, and Father, we just thank you, they have wisdom, and Father, we just continue to pray for this city, for this county, for everything that goes on within this city, that, Father God, it'll be inspired by you, inspired by the Holy Spirit. And we just thank you for this meeting today. We thank you, Lord God, that, Father, people will listen, they've become a doer of the Word and not just a hearer only, and that this facility is going to become better and better and better. And we thank you, Father, for these things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Next item, please.
Item four, oral communications from the audience.
All right, this is the section of the meeting where we open up the podium for anyone in the audience who would like to make public comments. Please limit your remarks to five minutes and to items not on the agenda. We didn't even go sit down. You were ready to come back up there, weren't you? Please state your name and address.
I was trying to put on the spot.
I'm sorry.
I'm Darryl Peterson. I pastor Grace Christian Church, and I'm here now to share what happened last Saturday. And, you know, we started, you know, Steve got us started on creating a unit of city that we would have a name, and we called it The Founders. And so, anyway, Saturday night was the night that we was going to have our get-together. And I don't know if we didn't check the calendar, we didn't pray, but we got ready for the meeting. And so, we get together, we have all the canopies put up, we have tables put up, we got it set up for 100 people, and got the water slide running and all that. And so, anyway, Adam come in just a little bit, just ahead of time, and he said, Pastor Darryl, he says, we're gonna have to pull this inside. And I said, okay, we can do it. So, we pulled in, got tables and everything put up inside, and I don't know about you, how many of you know how many is going to come in for city council, you know? Well, how many is going to come to the Founder's picnic after you purchased all the food and got it all put together, all ready to go? And so, it was kind of amazing. So, we moved everything inside, and we cooked stuff inside, got that all done. And people start coming in, they start coming in. We had just under 90 people come in that night. And the thing of it was, it was the enthusiasm. I mean, to tell you, I think everybody was trying to talk at once. And not only that, but, you know, we had events for the kids outside, and it turned out to be the biggest event because we had other things, other balls to play, whatever they wanted to do. And Adam says, he brought everything back, he said, they weren't interested in anything else but the water slide. And so, anyway, they had a blast, and it was, I think it was a very successful one. People, everybody come by and thanked whoever, you know, they just, they was very appreciative. And so, I think if we can do 90, I think we ought to be able to do a few more next time, so. But anyway, it was with great joy. We had a meeting that was a success because it could have bombed out, you know? A lot of people are, they judge whatever they do by looking out and see if the weather's like or whatever, but they came in and they was ready to go, so, thank you.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Darryl.
Good morning, Council. Kevin Arwin, the 911 Director.
Thank you.
Got a couple announcements for everybody. Just a reminder, the Mass Notification System is called Everbridge. It is offered by the city and available to all county members through the 911 Center. It's free to sign up. We allow, you create your own account, and you sign up for the warnings and watches and weather announcements that you get. It all comes from the National Weather Service. Please do so. So, as the National Weather Service puts that stuff out, it's all free to everybody, and we sponsor that through the 911 Center. The other announcement that we want to make is, save the date. October 28th, the Hutchinson Reno County Emergency Communications Center actually turns 40 years old. So, we will be having open house that day. It'll be a unique opportunity for the public to walk through the center. We're pretty well locked down because of the business that we conduct in there, and it's not always open, but we are going to open up the doors, provide tours. It's all been remodeled. It's a beautiful center. Our staff is all getting excited, so we'll have light refreshments that day. We'll be setting up the times as we get closer. We're also going to be reaching out to a lot of the alumni that have been there for the last 40 years to get this thing started, so if you know of anybody who was involved in getting it transferred over 40 years or has worked there in the last 40 years, let's get the word out to everybody. We really like them to come participate, but the biggest thing is, October 28th, it's 40 years old. So, we'd like to really invite everybody to stop by, and there'll be more details as we get closer.
I have a question for the Everbridge.
Yes, sir.
Can you sign that up, sign up for that through the Hutchinson City website?
It is on the Hutchinson City website?
I just want to make sure we point people in the right direction.
It is on the website, and it's on the county website as well. It's on both websites, and you can get through the links, create your account, sign up. There's also a nice little feature that we've added on to this, is it's the silent time. So, the watches from like a silent time from 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM, your phone won't go off. If it's a warning, sorry, your phone's gonna go off. You need to be notified, especially tornadoes, thunderstorm warnings, those kind of natures. The bonus is, is there is actually almost 200 potential observations that can be chosen. We've got it down to 75. We took out ocean. We didn't figure, Mayor, that that was going to be a huge issue, so we took some of them out. But, yeah, there's a lot of options in that program, so we encourage people to get signed up.
All right.
And work through that.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to come up to the podium? If not, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Item five, consent agenda.
Is there anything of note or questions on the consent agenda from the council If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to... Rat, paper, scissors? I move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? If not, please call roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item six A, consider ordinance authorizing bond sales.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. On July 5th, city council authorized the issuance of general obligation bond, sorry, for the projects listed in your packet that totaled $2,444,000. Yesterday, we had the bond sale. We had four bids. They ranged from 3.91% to 4.02%. The winning bidder was TD Securities. So, bond council has reviewed the ordinance, and our legal counsel has reviewed it as well, and made sure everything is kosher and fine. They recommend authorizing the ordinance as presented with the change that the par amount of the bonds will be $2,460,000. The difference between what is in your packet and the par amount of the bonds is due to the premium offered on the bid. So, that premium was able to be used to adjust the par amount to lower the amount that we're actually bonding. Are there any questions? We also have Tyler Ellsworth from Cootec Rock, our legal counsel here.
So, we have a $50,000 premium, and are we at, we're at 3.91%? Is that what the number was?
Yes.
Okay.
And how long is the bond?
20 years.
And again, the company that had the low bid?
TD Securities.
Have we used them before?
I know I've heard of them. I can't remember if we've used them before.
Okay.
Any questions for Angela or Mr. Ellsworth? Is that right?
I'm motion to approve. Is that, is this appropriate, Mr. Mayor?
I would entertain a motion.
I'm motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance and delivery of $2,500, well, change the number.
$2,460,000.
Yeah. Of general obligation bonds, Series 2023A, of the city of Hutchinson, Kansas, providing the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of an interest on the bonds as they become due, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion or questions on this? All right, if not, please call roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item six B, consider resolution authorizing bond sales.
The second part to issuing the bond sales is the resolution prescribing the form and details. This is the second part to accept the bond. Again, staff and legal counsel and bond counsel has all reviewed the resolution attached and recommend approving for the amount of $2,460,000. Are there any questions?
All move to approve a resolution prescribing the form and details of and authorizing the delivery of $2,460,000, principal amount of general obligation bonds, Series 2023-A of the city of Hutchinson, Kansas, previously authorized by an ordinance of the city and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? If not, please call roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes. Next item, please.
Thank you.
Item six C, consider an ordinance authorizing the execution of a loan agreement with the state of Kansas for wastewater treatment improvements.
Good morning. Jacob Coy, Assistant Public Works Director. We got two loan agreements this morning, one for the wastewater side and the other for the water distribution side improvements. Start off with the wastewater. Just a little bit about the Kansas Water Pollution Control Fund. Fund offers low-interest loans to help communities finance critical water pollution control projects, including the construction upgrade or expansion of the wastewater treatment facilities and sewer systems. Terms of this loan be $3,570,000, interest rate at 2.13, with the loan duration up to 20 years. Just to kind of refresh you, I don't know if all of you were here when this was first introduced. Just go through the projects of what it will fund. We have 33 lift stations in the collection system that the city of Hutch maintains. 28 of those have been rehabbed to date, so we have five left to do. Those lift stations are 19th and Terrace, 7th and Porter, Industrial Park, and Regency Park, and then the Shears Lift Station, which is the second largest lift station in the city. The rehab will be replacing of the self-priming topside wet well-mounted pumps and accessories with submersible non-clog pumps, buried valve vaults, including the sump pits, and then coating of existing structures. And then, we will also add some bypass connections just for a little bit extra redundancy in emergencies. And then, lift stations will also have the receptacles and manual transfer switches for operation from the portable generator if needed in the event of a power failure. Ultrasonic level indicators, and then, two of our stations, the 7th and Porter and the Regency Park stations, will be getting fog control, fat oil and grease controlled by mixed flush to help break up the, the 7th and Porter catches a lot of the industry, the restaurant flow off 11th, and then, the Regency Park has that truck's truck washout out there, That's kind of the first half of that. And then, the second half is the improvements to our Headworks grit collection system, be replacing the grit removal equipment and associated pipelines. Let me see this. So, this is the Headworks building, and then, this over here is our aerated grit chamber. This is installed in 1985, experiencing heavy corrosion, decreased efficiency, and unfortunately, we've had some equipment failure in the building this year. The grit pump's gone out, and now, we have a seal failure between the grit chamber and this basement where the grit pump is housed. So, right now, we are bypassing the Headworks, waiting on parts to get that seal replaced. But, just an overview of what this does for the wastewater plant. Wastewater enters through a bar screen and then falls down into the aerated grit chamber where we basically just slow the flow down, and then, the heavier grit settles down here to the auger, which is then pumped over to the grit, or pulled over to the grit pump, and then, that is pushed up to our, the grit classifier where it's created grit slurry, and then, grit is then dumped into a dumpster to be hauled off to the landfill. So, these are the main components of the Headworks equipment that will be replacing, the grit pump, and then, the classifier here. See, the grit enters through here, goes through this cyclone, and then, is separated in the classifier where excess water goes down back into the Headworks, and then, the grit falls down here into the chute. And then, right here is the seal that's recently failed on us and actually started flooding this basement, so we had to, the sump pump was keeping up, so it was fine, but it was a bit of a headache, so. So, the, just to give you an idea where we're at with the cost of these two wastewater projects, costs have increased significantly, significantly since the facility planning study was done in late 2018. Just the lift station project is estimated at 3.9 million right now. When we submitted this last October, we had estimated 2.75 million. There are about $600,000 in allowances in that project that mainly for bypass pumping of the stations while they're being rehabbed. It's just kind of unclear on how much that's going to end up costing, so anything, we don't spend off that, it comes back to, or off the contract. And then, we haven't gotten a definite cost on the Headworks. The original estimate was 820,000. Brian, just increase that the same amount as the lift stations, just to give us a good conservative estimate on those cost increases as well. So, we're looking at, you know, 1.3 million, a little over 1.3 million to get that project done as well. Obviously, the loan amounts for a little over 3.5, so what we are planning is coming back to council with a loan amendment to the total costs, or the total cost of the loan. The SRF program will allow you to add up to 1.5 million to the loan and keep your current interest rate. Anything over that 1.5, you'll have to pay the current market, or the 2.18 is what it is right now, so it's not a huge difference. Very important we get these projects done. We have the budget and the CIP to pay for these very conservative estimates on how much it's going to cost. We'll just have to push off some of our sewer linings in the future, but it's, these are the two most important projects that we need to do right now, so.
Any questions?
Questions on that?
So, that particular station was built in 1985?
The Headworks, yes.
The Headworks?
Yeah.
Has it had any, like, major repairs or parts replacements since then?
They replaced the auger once, and then, just the pump a few times. Other than that, most of it's original to that time, so.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. The guys do a great job taking care of that, so.
Yeah, sounds like it.
Where's that, where's that located?
It's out the wastewater treatment plant.
And where is that exactly?
South Hollstead, 30, I can't remember the address.
It's about a mile south of the highway off Airport Road, and then, a mile or so to the...
On Hollstead.
West, and then another jump south.
Yeah, well, I've never seen it. I mean, I knew it was down there somewhere, but...
Out of sight, out of mind.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah.
Any question? I know we went over the lift stations in a previous meeting. I can't remember how long ago that was, because I remember talking about the Shears Lift Station quite a bit. Any questions on the lift station projects? Well, then, I would entertain a motion if there's no other questions on this.
I move to approve an ordinance authorizing the execution of a loan agreement with the state of Kansas for the purpose of obtaining a loan from the Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund for the purpose of financing a wastewater treatment project, and authorize the mayor to sign the ordinance and loan agreement.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions? All right, please call roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes. Next item?
Item six D, consider an ordinance authorizing the execution of a loan agreement with the state of Kansas for water distribution system improvements.
So, this agreement will be for ongoing main, will be for the beginning of our water line replacement program. The loan amount is $1,205,000, and we will be receiving principal forgiveness on this loan of 361,000, or, yeah, 361,500. So, the estimated net loans, 800,408, 100,400. 800,443. Why can't I say that number?
843,300.
843,500, gosh. The interest rate, 2.13, and then, the loan duration is up to 20 years as well on that one. Just a little bit about how we've gotten started on this project. The city used the American Water Works Association Buried No Longer Pipe Replacement Modeling Tool to determine the recommended amount of water lines we need to replace each year. Model recommends we replace 3.3 miles in 2023, however, due to revenue projections, we can only afford to do 1.3 miles. This will increase each year as our budget allows with the rate increases. So, this model helped us focus in on the pipe age, pipe material, and pipe size that was most likely to fail, and it gave us a recommendation on where we should best start. You can see the age of the water lines. The majority of our breaks happen in the pipe, or the distribution system that was installed during 1950 and 1960. Waterline, the material of the water line, the cast iron pipe, is the biggest culprit. And then, about 62% of our water lines are cast iron pipe, which also represents about 94% of the water line breaks. And then, the six-inch water lines are the, represent about 80% of our water main breaks as well. So, with that in mind, we narrowed in on an area between K-61 in town and First and Ninth to do some targeted water line replacements. These water lines were installed between 1948 and 1968, our cast iron pipe and our six-inch diameter, and they also have a history of water line breaks, so. Is there any questions on that?
Who does the principal forgiveness come from? Does that come from the state?
KDA.
Okay. And that's a given, there's no qualifiers for that forgiveness?
You just have to spend that 1.2 million to qualify for that much forgiveness.
Okay.
Does it also allow for, the other one had a 1.5 million, you could bump it up at the same interest rate?
It does, but we...
Just curious if that's something that's still in there.
It does. We're not planning on doing that, though. We're just going to get through as much as we can with this amount.
Right. Any other questions on this?
Is that east of the highway or west?
That is west.
If there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve an ordinance authorizing the execution of a loan agreement with the state of Kansas for the purpose of obtaining a loan from the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund for the purpose of financing a public water supply project, and authorize the mayor to sign the ordinance and loan agreement.
I'll second that.
Any other questions? Please call roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item six E, consider resolution approving a special event in a designated entertainment district for the Southwest Bricktown Fiesta.
Paul Brown, city attorney. You have before you a resolution for a special event for the Southwest Bricktown Fiesta. There is a map attached to the resolution showing the area involved for the event, this special event, a design... This special event, a designated entertainment district approves the consumption of alcohol on city property and you can see it there. It's, it even has the old name of the park on there, Ashmead Park, which is now Southwest Bricktown Park. And it involves the street directly out in front of my old office. So I'd ask the council to approve that designated entertainment district.
Any questions or comments from city council members?
Is this the same as they've done before for this event?
Not exactly. It's, it's really different. It was primarily in the park before and a smaller portion of the street.
Okay. So the event is growing, it sounds like.
It is. I think we had some discussion on not trying to have people in such a confined area with the open carry of alcohol and this is how we're addressing that. If we have a problem, we'll go back to the other way.
I would entertain a motion on this.
Motion to approve a resolution authorizing a special event in the designated entertainment district pursuant to city code section 18-801, whatever the hell that is, E.T. sequence or, for the Southwest Bricktown Fiesta and authorize the mayor to sign.
I hope that's in the minutes exactly like that.
My question is, should I second that?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other questions or comments or wordage to use on that? If not, please call roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item six F, consider resolution approving a special event in a designated entertainment district for the Reno County versus the World Boxing Event.
This is another designated entertainment district. It is not on city property, but with our ordinances, if it's in a private parking lot, then it still requires the city's approval for the consumption of alcohol there because it is otherwise prohibited. I can't tell you much about Reno County versus the World Boxing Event. You're not actually approving the event. I would bring one thing to the council's attention. This event is scheduled during the fair. We don't ban other events during the fair, but we have some restrictions, but it doesn't apply to this area where this event occurs. For example, we have a provision that prohibits anything on the city's right of way around the perimeter of the fair during the fair. And similarly in our lease with Hutchinson Community College for the sports arena, they're not allowed to schedule any circuses, carnivals, those type of events at the sports arena during the fair. But this event is not within either one of those, but it does occur during the fair. Now I would just bring that to your attention for your consideration. Again, we don't approve the event, what you're approving here is the consumption of alcohol in that private parking lot.
All right, any other questions or comments on this? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing special event in a designated entertainment district pursuant to city code section 18-801. What, what is?
Et Sec?
Et Sec, thank you. For the Reno County versus the World Boxing Event and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments on this? If not, please call roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes. Next item.
Item seven, report of city officials.
Ms. Goss, would you start us off, please?
Yes. I'm going to start with a question. I read an article, I don't remember where, probably Hutch Post, that said the chamber was in talks about the Sunoco plant possibly being sold. Haven't seen any updates, but I feel like that was a couple of weeks ago. Does anybody have an update, Mary Grace? Do you have you?
Well, at this point, it is not listed. Last time I was at the chamber, this, actually the other day. So they have not, it's not seen it as been listed. We're, they're still actively looking, waiting for it to be listed for sale.
Other than that, I guess I'll be the first one up here to publicly congratulate Chief Burley on his new role. I would recommend that maybe we remove the part on the website that says we're still hiring for that because it's still up there under featured news. Don't want people to think you're already on your way out. The Everbridge Communications, I strongly urge people to sign up for those. I can't tell you how convenient it is to receive a text, especially if you wear a smart watch, you get an alert to your watch as well whenever there's bad weather or something like that. And it's, it's just a really great communication. There's also a direct tie-in with our ISO city classification. We have to maintain a certain level of communication with the county and with the city, with the residents in order to maintain that level one status that we have. And I may be using the wrong terms there, but essentially what that means for the public is you have a little bit lower of an insurance rate for your home and for your property. If we lose that standing, we may see insurance rates, classifications go up. I think insurance rates have gone up across the board over the past couple of years. And this is just one more thing that perhaps people even have a little bit of control over. So sign up for Everbridge. You have to create an account. It's very simple. You can do it from a phone or from a computer and then you will start to get those alerts. And I will plug again to be on the lookout for children and buses. Nickerson started Monday, Bueller started today, Hutch starts Wednesday and Thursday. So you're going to see lots of kids out, walking, waiting for buses, waiting at crosswalks and all of that. So put your phone down, slow down, be aware. And I will say that I read an article about the way that they design, I read some weird stuff, but the way that they design how fast you can go in a school zone and it is directly tied to the survivability of a, of a crash at that speed, at the size, for the size of a child, et cetera. So it's very specific. They didn't just make up those school zone numbers willy-nilly. There's a science behind it. So I just urge people to slow down and follow, follow those rules. And Greg, did I talk long enough for you?
Yeah.
And with that, I'm, I'm through. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conklin?
The only thing I have is I also would like to congratulate Chief Burley and think he's an outstanding selection and look forward to him being our chief of police.
All right, thank you. Mr. Fast?
Big shout out to the Hutch Monarchs. Paul and I were talking before the, before the meeting about how long it's been since our, I guess it's a semi-pro baseball team has had a championship and I'm not sure they ever have, but it was probably back in the Hutch Bronx days. But, but again, congratulations to Mark Blackham and, and the crew that, that, they were, they were really kind of underdogs in that whole tournament and hopefully we'll have a proclamation for them next time and maybe invite them in. I would echo the, the whole school zone thing. I've been noticing a lot of activity around all the schools. Please, please be aware of that and, and congratulations Chief Burley. We've, we've both been around a long time and it's kind of cool to see you in charge.
Mr. Garza?
Yes. Well, I have been out of town for two and a half weeks on a real fun vacation down in Texas, Padre Island, McCowen, all those areas down there visiting my family and my wife's family and I'm glad to be back. Now the citizens didn't know I was gone, my phone was going off the hook like it usually does, which is okay, but I didn't answer it, so. So anyway, I had a good time and then I, I called the citizens back when I got back, got everything taken care of. I would also announce the youth council tonight is their last meeting for this year. Those kids did an outstanding job and they will have a little celebration after the meeting today. I please welcome the community, come out and support these young, young youths that did a fantastic job. They're going to have celebration after the meeting. Please come out and show them that you appreciate them coming out and try to get part of the government and try to understand it. We, the, there'll start elections coming up pretty soon for the new group of kids. I think they did a fantastic job and I would please hope everybody comes out and to the meetings at six o'clock tonight. After the meeting, we'll have the ceremonies of the youngsters that did it for a job. They did a fantastic job. And I invite the city council, if you can be there tonight and support these young city council people, they did a great job. Also, the founders did a great job while I was gone. Mr. Adam did a great job. Thank you for doing what you do and, and it just, I heard turned out really great. So other than that, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Not only congratulations, but thank you for taking on the role as police chief. We appreciate that. The school comments reminded me that it is election season for a lot of school board members. So if, with that in mind and as a school gets fired up, I would encourage people to call, ask questions of people running for school board. I think the last few years have shown how just, just how important school board activities are. And with that, I will hand it over to our city manager.
I too want to welcome and congratulate Chief Burley. The process was longer than we had hoped for, but obviously taking our due diligence just to, to ensure and, and just delighted to have him continue the role. It's, it's great to have him be able to see and take the leadership. He is going to do an amazing job. He's been committed to this community and 24 years of putting that uniform on and we're really excited to just watch the, the department continue to make positive moves and to thrive. I'm going to put you on the spot and invite you to come up and have a few words if you could.
Sure. Well, I'd like, I'd like to talk a little bit on a personal level and not so much a professional level. I'd like to first thank Mary Grace for giving me this opportunity to fill the role as chief of police for the city of Hutchinson. I understand the, the importance of having the right person in that position. Time will tell if I am that right person, but I will tell you that I'm going to do everything in my power to try to make it the best agency that we can with the thought in mind that we're here to serve the citizens of Hutchinson and, and that's who we answer to, which obviously you guys are the leaders for the citizens of Hutchinson. So we'll be kind of taking our direction from you all and, and the city manager and Mary Grace. I'd just like to also commend Mary Grace. She has, was very diligent through the application process and put, put us all through the wringer pretty good and, and, but I really appreciated that because I felt that she was doing everything to make sure that the right candidate was selected for that job. So I, I thought it was well done and well put on by Mary Grace. I'd also like to thank my family and the support that they've given me over these 24 years. It's been challenging at times, but they've always stood in my corner and I wouldn't be here today without them. Excuse me. I'd also like to thank all the officers on the department, all the employees for the Hutchinson Police Department and they, they've been nothing but supportive and the, the real reason that I wanted to take on this job was because of them. They have a real commitment to the city and making it the best city that it can be and the safest city that it can be. So a lot of people got me here. This was not just me, it was so many other people and I just want to thank everybody that has anything to do with it. And I'm looking forward to the challenge and I think we are going to do great things and I'm really looking forward to it. So thank you all and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Excited and thank your family as well for all, for all the patience they've shown. Also want to commend the, the teams that worked very hard. I want to thank with chief of police hiring, we had some community members that stepped up and I do appreciate all their help and effort. The internal directors that stepped in to help, help with the, give some insight to this decision-making process. We also wanted, wanted to let you know that the union negotiations have, have moved forward. Very appreciative of all the hard work that Tom Sanders specifically has done and all the union and the, and the police, the FOP, the FIRE, the IAFF and also within the parks and the public works, department, the SEIU and dispatch. We believe we've come to agreement on all four different contracts. We've had some small things to do, but we're at a good place to, at this point of the year, so we're really happy about that. And I appreciate everyone coming to the table in a collaborative mindset and feel very good about the work that we did to put employees first in a lot of ways. I also want to commend the Monarchs, National Baseball Congress, the World Series and Mark and Kim Blackham and the first year coach, Casey Lipholz. And I think they did a great job representing Hutch, really excited about that. I also want to lastly remind people that our utility billing, billing as of September 1st, we will not take payments over the phone. So again, that's happening September 1st, so we have a few more weeks left that, that will happen over the phone, but after that, and I think we've gotten a really good response from the public on that to make sure everybody's aware of it. Finally, I will continue to tell everyone in the community, please, please, please. Our city workers work very hard. They are out there every day in the heat, doing some work that I commend them because I don't know if I could. And I would ask that you please show them respect and show them some courtesies. We've had some rather disheartening conversations from some of our residents, how they're treating our employees and I want to ask that you respect them. And if, if there's a problem that you have with anything, I ask that you call and talk to the city, myself, because don't take it out on our workers. That's the last place that you should be doing that. So I appreciate all the workers and all the hard work they do every day and I thank them for that. That's it.
Thank you very much. Well, it's the point for adjournment, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Please call roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes. Thank you, everybody.